Five, and this is a USB Law and Licensing Committee meeting. Chair Carey is, uh, may not make it, so he's asked me to chair today. So I'm gonna have those members of our committee introduce themselves and let us know what area they cover. So Member Lear, do you want to start?
Sure. My name is Carol Lear, and um, I am the board member who represents District Six. And District Six would be most of Salt Lake City and all of Park City. Um, and actually out to uh, in Holiday and uh, East Mill Creek now.
And it looks like we might have just lost Member Longacre. So I'll introduce myself while hopefully she's getting back on. So I'm Amanda Bullinger. I represent District Nine, which is the southwest corner of the valley, which includes Riverton, Harriman, uh, South Jordan and parts of Bluffdale, Sandy, and a few other small cities, including Midville. So, let's see if Member Longacre can get back on. Um, Elise, can I ask, if we only have two members, we would have to pause, correct?
I believe so.
Okay, so Member Longacre just text, she said she'd be back on in a few minutes. So, we will pause for just a minute, and I apologize for the disruption. And I will uh, let her know that we'll, we'll be waiting.
Elise, or um, Vanessa, one of you, while we're waiting, would uh, you send the latest draft, which I just discovered ten, about ten minutes ago, um, to my Lear Law address? And then I can at least look at it on that while we're talking.
Yep, I'll do that right now.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like I'm getting word that we can meet. We just won't be able to take any votes up at this point. So hopefully we'll hear from Member Hall or Member Longacre getting back on. Um, so I just wanted to start by kind of recapping the purpose of this meeting. If you look at what our agenda states, that um, we'll be reviewing the, the U-PAC rules. There's three rule, or four rules, excuse me, that have been a part of that. And I will go back and read some of our actions we took from our previous meeting. This is kind of a carryover from our last meeting when I talked to Chair Carey. Um, he wanted to make sure that we had a chance to review R-277-211, R-277-215, and R-277-217, since we didn't get a chance to talk about those. When I go back and read from our meeting on September 5th, just to kind of recap where we were. And I don't know if anybody's driving, if you can, if anybody has access to pull up our summary of actions. That's kind of what I'm going off of. But we did have a discussion about the U-PAC rules. That we had three board members that submitted a request to review the U-PAC definitions, the educator standards, and the U-PAC presumptions. Um, we did take a time, a big chunk of time talking about R-277-210. There was a motion in that committee member. Uh, where Member Longacre moved that the committee would approve R-277-210 Draft Three on first reading and forward to the Board for approval on second and final reading. And uh, the motion did fail four to one. And then there was also another committee action where Member Lear moved that the committee share the committee discussion with Board Leadership and recommend establishment of a working group to review U-PAC rules. So that's kind of where we got to. Uh, so Member Lear, if we want to go back and uh, look at where we're at with R-277-211, I think I'd like to start there. There, yes, and um, Member Bogus, if you would, I know that you've been part of the, this with the group of board members that have been working on this. And I understand from, or from my understanding, I guess, I should say that a lot of these changes in these other three documents wouldn't really make sense unless they go along with 210. And you can correct me if I'm wrong on that, uh, Member Bogus. But if you can maybe just speak to what we're looking at with 211 and what those changes um, are being recommended.
So I think you stated that very well, um, Member Bullinger. It, many of these things would not make sense without 210 as the foundational document. Um, some of them could, uh, you know, they're very similar to um, what came out of the last board meeting. And then there's some, some additions which would streamline um, the, the U-PAC process, make it more efficient. Um, and some of these uh, were suggested by, by our staff. Um, but the, the crux of the matter is it doesn't make sense unless we have 210 as, as that foundational document. Does, would you like me to go beyond that?
Nope, that's exactly, that's perfect. Thank you for that.
And I have a, Amanda, then sorry, sorry for the informality. And my computer keeps taking on this, bringing in this ad, that, anyway. Um, so I'm, I'm wondering then, if we did not pass 210, um, if, if failure to move forward to 10. I'm wondering, and, and uh, Member Bogus has just said that the other two are um, dependent on 210. I'm wondering how we go forward with that.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. I think for where we're at now, especially since we are, with us being short in numbers, um, we wouldn't even be able to make a motion at this point, anyway. So if we can maybe just spend a little bit of time just looking at what the changes would be on those, and then we can go back to 210 if, if we um, have time to. I know we're only scheduled for, for an hour. And that will also speak to, uh, Member Lear, and that's what we have to decide then as a committee, is if we want to move forward with the direction of um, asking for a working group like we previously did, because that's the motion that came out of our committee last time. Or if there's a different direction that the committee feels like that they're ready to go. Um, I don't, I do know that there's been some amendments to, to 10. Um, I'm not, and that's where we'll have to kind of look at to see if those um, are in a direction where we want to revisit that. Um, so I'd be open, Member Lear, would you rather start at 210? I'm open to the body.
I'm, it is kind of circular, so I'm, I'm sorry. Oops, there we go. Um, I, and it's, and it's especially frustrating with that, with only the two of us here.
Yeah, I, I do know that, that I know, I know that Chair Carey wanted us to make sure that we at least covered 211, 215, and 217.
And, and by, maybe let's do this, if this is okay, Amanda, and this is okay, Member Bogus. Um, can, you might as well talk about, so that we satisfy what Member Chair Carey suggested, and because we have not addressed the others in committee, even though it's sort of uh, a backwards way to do it. If, if we, maybe we could just hear the discussion from Christina, sorry for the informality, Christina, but um, we'll just hear Christina's discussion, and then um, at least we will have satisfied that uh, purpose. And then, then where the most of the meat of it is in 210, we could go back to that. How would that work?
I am, if you're asking me for a response, or are you asking Member Bullinger?
Either of you, either of you.
I was gonna say, that, that's the direction I was hoping we could go. And I was hoping that, again, I just wanted us to be clear that 211, 215, and 217 don't really make sense to move forward with unless we move forward with 210. But I would like, if, if Member Bogus can maybe help us talk through what those changes in these others are. Okay, perfect.
Okay, then if, if, oh, I apologize, Chair.
No, that's okay. Go ahead, Member Bogus.
Okay, I, so I need to shut off all, every device I have here, and apparently I have 15 of them, so I'm just gonna mute this. Um, so if we could pull up, let's, let's start at 217, please. Actually, no, may I change my mind? Can we start at 215?
215, uh, sure, the only one I didn't print.
Well, that's okay, because I'm gonna make this easy for you. Because the language is moved, we've moved the language from 215 into 210, so that we're not opening up all these rules, we're just getting it all done in the same place. Um, if 210 passes, it would precipitate a repeal of 215.
That's right, okay.
So it's just very simple, Member Lear.
So we've discussed that, right.
Uh, yeah, check that one off. So with that, let's go to 217.
Okay.
And um, 217 would, 217 is presently what we are calling the educator standards. And clearly 90% of the language that was moved in and into 10 comes from this document. Um, and so it really just pulls the educator standards out, and it updates it into um, the reporting thing into a streamlined version. If we could scroll down just a little bit. Um, there's, you know, it updates the category. Yeah, keep scrolling, and it gets clear to the bottom. And there's some language left at the bottom, which is the um, Executive Secretary responsibilities. And some of those things, which um, really only makes sense if 210 passes. And so, for example, the shall provide forms on a board's website for reports. Um, that if it passes, there's elements of this that would streamline the job responsibilities of the Executive Secretary, which would make this um, come into a thing, and it also aligns it with code. If you look at 169, um, it, we just put that in there, and then it just updates it. The rest of that, as we all know, is existing language, and then um, it ends. So hopefully that uh, helps you with that one. Do you have any questions on that one?
I, if, I, I do, not so much questions as comments, just a couple of things. Um, and it makes this a little more difficult because, again, we're not, we're discussing this out of context, but, or.
And I'm, I'm gonna pause this just for a second, uh, Member Lear, if I may, and let you know, Member Longacre has joined us.
Oh, good, oh, good.
So she, so we do have a, a quorum of our committee, so.
And did you tell her we're looking at 217 too?
Yeah, I was just gonna introduce, so, Member Longacre, just to update, you were, we're looking at the rules that we haven't looked at yet. Uh, we reviewed 215, which would be proposed to be uh, repealed. Now we're at 217. But again, um, we've discussed that all of these rules only make sense if 210 were to move forward. So just to catch you up on that, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Member Lear.
Thank you. I'm looking at line 209 in the previous draft, so of 217. So I, I noticed, as I read quickly through your new draft of 210, yes, that um, you took out diversion, because diversion's not the same as a plea in abeyance. It's not a, it's not considered a conviction, and using air quotes. So, but in here, you've still got diversion. Um, and I'm, of course, I'm, I'm opposed to a lot of things in these rules, but I'm also opposed to this. Um, and I'm also opposed to the idea of, um, the whole idea of uh, lines 206 through 209, where it says, "Shall report, anybody who hears anything shall report to the Executive Secretary within, and, and et cetera, et cetera, within 48 hours." Um, and including the diversion, which I just mentioned, I'm an educator, from any source received. I think that just perpetuates rumors and ruins careers. Uh, so I, and I don't expect a response on any of these. I think we can just go forward. You've uh, explained your point of view, I'm explaining mine, so.
I think a response is, is necessary.
Um, I, I just, and just, let me just pause for a minute. I'm, I don't want to be here for three hours, and if every comment I have merits a response, then I'm not gonna make any comments, and I'll leave my questions unanswered. So if, if it's okay with Chair um, uh, Bullinger, then yes, answer this, but I'm not gonna do that again. So I, I, I will hear this response, but I, I would rather, these drafts speak for themselves. I think it's now the committee's time to make our points. And so I'm, I'll listen through this one, but I don't, I don't particularly need a back and forth, uh, unless I ask a question.
Okay, thanks, Member Lear. So what we'll do is, uh, Member Bogus, we'll let you go ahead and respond to this one. And then what we'll do moving forward, if there are specific questions, then we will, we will ask those and direct those. So go ahead, Member Bogus.
Well, I think um, line 208 was probably just an oversight. Um, and as you're looking at 217, I, that it just is. Um, with regard to 210 through 216, um, that is almost the exact thing that's happening now, except we're putting a timeframe on it. And so I'm, I'm not certain, uh, I, I guess if, if you were okay with the language you voted affirmatively for last week, I guess then I would just ask you to amend it so that it does fit within what you think.
And I don't recall, I don't have a copy that shows me what was crossed out, but I, as I recall, from any source received is new language, from what I recall. That's my concern. That could be a rumor, that could be a, a, could be an anonymous letter, it could be so many things. And that's what I'm objecting to, in addition to the diversion language. And the 48 hours doesn't allow for any kind of a um, appeal period, or any kind of a, a, a period of, of um, affirmation that might come from another source. So I have a problem with the 48 hours, I have a problem from any source received, and I have a problem with um, uh, the diversion. And I hear your concerns, but I don't share them. Thank you.
And um, Director Rasmussen, if I could maybe ask you on, on the lines 210 through 216, so it looks like before it would be an LEA uh, would notify U-PAC. Now it is the superintendent, the director, or it could be a designee, um, reports to the Executive Secretary within 48 hours. Can you, uh, and just going through those changes, can you help me understand um, how that would be different or impact the current process of things? And how that might impact either um, you as the Executive Secretary and/or LEAs?
I mean, I think the biggest change on 210 through uh, 216 is the, is the adding of the 48-hour time period. Uh, right now, we generally uh, encourage LEAs to go through their investigative process. And when it's complete, uh, send it to U-PAC, and then we can, we can, can initiate our process. By the way, this is drafted, well, this puts a 48-hour timeframe on that that isn't there right now. Would be the biggest change there. I don't think specifying individuals, there is a marked change, because it's generally is the HR department or, that would report those. And so I think the superintendents could designate the HR team to do that. Uh, but the biggest change there would be the, the timeframe.
And so if I may ask, and I don't know, maybe this goes to Director Rasmussen, maybe this goes to AAG, uh, Bill. I'm not sure who would be the best to answer this. So, uh, Director Rasmussen, if this is not you, and it's AAG Bill outside too, if this, if we were to put this into rule within a 48 hours, and let's say that somebody didn't report within 48 hours, could it compromise the ability to follow through with the U-PAC um, findings with um, an employee complaint?
Uh, I don't think so. I mean, this is coming after the LEA process, as I read this. It's after their process is complete, and so I don't think it should be, I mean, the, the biggest issue is whether or not that's a difficulty to pass that along within 48 hours. But uh, I don't think it would have any effect on the U-PAC process. We, we'd start when we get it, and we'd move forward, and that's what we're doing right now.
Okay, perfect. And then actually, Member Bogus, I do have a question for you, maybe to help me understand. If we can slide down to line 222 through 224, just right below that, where it looks like currently that, that, once the report had, or in the past, when it's happened, and they've received the allegation, "But shall defer further investigation pending the LEA's determination of possible LEA discipline." Um, actually, let me start with Director Rasmussen. So currently, I just wanted to see if I understand this correctly. Uh, if you can explain that portion to me, and then I'd like to go to Member Bogus's to the thinking behind taking that out. So Director Rasmussen?
Yes, if I may. So this specifically deals with parent allegations, because we, we have a requirement currently that an LEA has to report parent allegations of misconduct within 30 days, even if their process of investigation is not complete. And so basically, what uh, happens if we get something that the LEA is still investigating, is we, we put it in a list of things to follow up on, and we, we follow up with the LEA, or the, if the LEA doesn't follow up with us promptly. So uh, that would be the major change there, is it's taking, it's taking out the language about us following up on those uh, there.
Okay, thank you. And Member Bogus, maybe you can help me understand, um, is um, the purpose behind taking that out, and/or if part of that language was moved to 210? And if so, where we would find that?
So I don't believe this was moved to 210. I make about six errors a week, but I do not believe this was moved to 210. Um, mostly just to streamline the process, so that we're, we're not waiting forever and ever to get things moving along. Uh, I think Director Rasmussen summated it well. I don't know that I have anything to add to his comments.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Amanda, I have another question related to that same area. And then I want, and, and then also, and this would probably be for Ben. And then also a, a related question that I still, um, I, I, that maybe he can answer. I'm just realizing he might remember the old language. Um, so I'm looking at what, and this is on Draft Three, so I don't know if it's changed. But it says, "An LEA superintendent, et cetera, shall report to the Executive Secretary within 48 hours of the completion of a judicial or administrative proceeding, internal LEA investigation." Um, those things, so all of those would, or at least some, some of those would have appeal periods. So when it says completion, do you, does that mean at the end of the appeal opportunity, which might go considerably longer than the end of the uh, judicial or administrative proceeding, internal investigation?
Director Rasmussen?
Uh, yes, I, that's a good question. I'm just uh, looking at the language there. I don't know that uh, you know, the judicial process, if you're, if you're looking at that language, that would certainly include appeals. Uh, administrative uh, proceedings, that certainly could include appeals. So I think that would kind of be up to the LEA to determine when the appropriate time is to send that, based on where things lie.
Okay, so it could be several months in the case of, or maybe longer in the case of judicial appeals. And it could be maybe, uh, just depending on how fat, what an LEA's process looks like, it could be several weeks, because, or months, because I don't want to have any uh, educator additionally punished by reading the completion word differently.
No, I think you're right.
That concerns me. And the other thing I wanted to come back to on lines, in Draft Three, lines 208 and 209, "From any source received," is that language from the old rule, I don't recall it being that um, being that open-ended.
Uh, so if you look, if I may, if you look on, that language would be stricken on, uh, so if you look on lines 192 through 194, you'll find the old language. It was a 48-hour turnaround on reporting arrests or convictions, but that, that language about from any source received is new.
Okay, that's, that is very helpful, and I just repeat my concern that rumors are perpetuated, that um, gossip is perpetuated. Um, and those, even the, even the state, even certain statements about individuals that somebody may have heard of, um, would be a career ender for, for in certain circumstances. So I really don't like that language also.
Member Lear, did you have anything else you'd like to discuss about 217?
No, those were my uh, uh, concerns. I mean, I'm sure there's some deeper ones too.
Hey, and Member Longacre, any questions about 217?
No.
Okay.
So I move, given that there are three of us, um, I move that we um, move on to uh, R-277-211 for discussion.
Okay.
I don't know if we need to vote or.
Yeah, I don't know if that needs a formal motion. I guess I, if we're, if nobody's making any motion on 217, I think we can just go to 211. Is that correct? Does anybody, okay, I'm getting a nod. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and just move to 211, and we did touch on this one a little bit. Um, Member Bogus, I'm, I'm gonna come back to you to just maybe talk us through, if we can, now that we're on this one, if we can just scroll down, if you can just kind of talk us through some of these changes in this um, Draft Four, please.
I'm happy to, and this one was, has not really been touched, except minorly, from the, the last one. If we could go ahead and scroll down, I believe Elise perhaps might be running this. Um, it obviously would have its um, category for the, the matrix, if you look at.
183, first change.
183 is, actually, I think it's 39, maybe?
39?
It, it could be, yeah.
There's something crossed out in 117.
I, the, the, the changes in black have already been approved by the Board.
Oh, please accept my apologies, okay.
The, the changes that are part of the 2-on-X proposal start on 183.
Thank you very much. Okay, so this ultimately would just streamline the process for, for U-PAC. Um, obviously, we're preserving an educator's due process rights, that is 183 and 184, if we could move forward just a little bit.
Same changes on 229.
And, yeah, right there, and that just, again, for efficiency and streamlining process. And um, and I appreciate that recommendation from our Executive Secretary. Let's keep going. And, and I appreciate that recommendation from our executive secretary. Let's keep going on down below.
And three forty-eight is the other one.
Apologies, my mouse is not working.
This is a really doomed meeting.
Okay, what was the line again? I apologize.
Three forty-eight, Elise.
Three forty-eight, okay. All right, so this also is, this was moved actually from two-ten into this rule. And this would create a space where what we are coining as the educator matrix could be streamlined into a database with a cover sheet. I'm happy to share with you a mock-up. It's not something that's done or necessarily board-approved, but a mock-up of what that could look like so that the process is streamlined and ultimately, when the work is done, it eliminates a step for our executive secretary by creating that cover sheet, which would auto-populate in a database on the other end.
Okay, did that conclude all of the proposed changes?
I believe so. But to be honest, this was one that did not have many, but that, it was suggested that that move here, that it would be a more appropriate space for it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that explanation. Member Lear, did you have?
I do have, actually do have a question for Member Bogus, and this is one that seems to, it seems to reappear in every rule, and I thought it would just be easier to hear her sort of explanation because it, and, and I think there's some, there's some internal inconsistency that I'm not sure she intended or is intended. But if I can just get the explanation. So previously, we've had a letter of education that goes directly to the educator if, if it's a, if it's a minor violation. And it's not recorded in the Cactus file. And it's, there's not an official record of it, is guess what I'm saying, except it's maintained by UPAK somewhere, somehow. Then we have a, that's the letter of education. Then we've had a letter of warning. And the practice has been that that goes to the educator, and it may go to the LEA, I don't remember. But it is not, it may not even go to the LEA. But because it doesn't, isn't considered an action, and this is in the past, it would not be recorded in Cactus. And then I'm seeing different things. It seemed like in the last, as I briefly went through draft four, that seems to have been changed again, and I'm seeing some changes here. So if, Member Bogus, if you could just explain what you, how you are visualizing those previous letters, the letter of education, the warning, the reprimand, how would you now characterize those?
Member Bogus?
Thank you. I'm so sorry, Member Ballinger. Please accept my apologies. So previously, the, the idea was just to let UPAK handle the letters of education. They were defined as a letter sent when a violation was not found, but that if the behavior continued a violation, could be found, something to that end. And the idea was, let's just let UPAK handle that. We'll give them to that, that comes to the board every month. And if no violation has been found, I think letters of education are best handled more efficiently and precisely by our executive secretary, giving him the opportunity to, to just get that done. The board doesn't need to vote on those, in my opinion. Obviously, it's a policy decision. It was expressed that if that was the intent, then that needed to come back. But that to pull that out of there so that the executive secretary could do that job without bringing all of those things over to the board so that that could streamline that process for, for the UPAK process altogether. And it would also force the board to spend their time on things that were more important, letters of warning and reprimands, et cetera. Did, did you track with that? And did I answer your question?
Well, you didn't get to the letter of warning, which it seems that you're changing to now an action, which means that more due process would be, that the individual educator would be entitled to more due process. Because previously, there hadn't been an opportunity for a hearing with letters of warning because they didn't affect the licensing status in any way. So if you want to explain the letter of warning, and then I wanted to go back to the letter of education and, and ask a clarifying question. But go to the letter of warning, if you don't mind first.
So is it, is it okay that we're moving to two-ten then? Because you're now moving me into two-ten.
Well, and I'm saying that these, but they're throughout, they're mentioned throughout, or they're crossed out throughout. So it, it just seems to me a more general question than just a two-ten question or a two-eleven question.
So it, it doesn't make sense in two-eleven if you don't look at two-ten? So I'm happy to answer the question, but I need to take us to two-ten.
So I, I would say, so now that we, well, let me pause for just a second. Member Lear, do you, besides these questions about letter of warning, letter of education, that might put us into two-ten? Did you have any other questions about two-eleven, or does this really sum up your questions?
It's, I, I just had that general question. Let me just double check.
And let me check with, while you're checking, while you're checking, I'll check with Member, Member Longacre. Do you have any questions about two-eleven?
No, sorry, I was slow to hit my button.
Oh, you're good. Thank you.
I, I, I'm, I mean, we can go to two-ten, that's not a big deal. But I do see online one seventy-four of two-eleven, there's a warning in there still, and a letter of education in there still. So it seemed like that was an appropriate question for this rule, to understand what is the, what are the consequences for that in the, in Member Bogus's mind?
You're just trying to understand what the, like, the process, and if they can have a reprimand on their, if it's impacting their licensure?
Well, it hasn't previously, so I'm, but it seems to be, it seems to be in, throughout all of these rules, having a different consequence now than it used to. So it, it doesn't matter if we go to two-ten. I just want to understand. Letter of education, she's explained, although I want to ask one question about that. And then the letter of warning, how was that different than previously? Maybe I can ask it that way, and it's a little clearer.
Okay, let's, then let's go ahead and move to two-ten, since that's what we have pulled up here. Member Bogus, if you could speak to the.
Could we go to the, the space, letter of warning doesn't really change much because it doesn't have an effect on the license? So it, the only thing that effectuates a license is a suspension or a revocation? A, a, well, and a reprimand. I apologize. I saw Ben's face pop up. A reprimand puts a flag on the file. I missed that one. But a letter of warning does not effectuate a license?
Well, by effectuate, let's go to Member, let's go to Director Asmuson, and maybe he can give us, in, in your reading of these new drafts, Ben, does a letter of warning change in, in character from what it has been?
Director Asmuson?
Yeah, so I think that's a, a good question, because I know that we've talked a little bit about this as we've discussed her draft as to whether, she's talked about whether the letter of warning should be public under grandma and should be something that should be seen under the lookup tool. If those changes were made, I think it would be something that might necessitate us looking at what the due process involved was at that point. The way the letter of warning is currently, it doesn't really have a substantial effect on the license because it's essentially a private, a private letter of direction to the educator. But if, if parts of it were to be made public, I think we'd have to review what the due process implications of that are. The letter of education, I just was going to highlight, there's a new definition for that that's on your screen. That would be issued by UPAK in cases where the charge, where the, the allegations have been dismissed. The UPAK could still give some admonition in those cases, is kind of how that's been discussed. But I, I think you're, you're right, the letter of warning would have to, we'd have to give some thought as to what that looks like if, if these changes are passed.
And, and it seems to me, because I guess, is it okay if I still have the floor?
Yep.
Chair, it seems to me that if it's made public and it is recorded in Cactus, it does have some effect on the license. And then that would require that UPAK offers an opportunity for a hearing if a, if an educator does not want that to be known publicly as the educator might change districts or, or jobs. So I think that, I, you can look into it further, Ben, but it seems to me that you can't, it's hard to argue that that's not an, a burden on the license, so to speak, that would entitle the educator to more due process than in the past. So and that's just, we can leave it there. We're not there yet, so I think, you know, the research into that, what that would mean, maybe can come at a later date. The other question I did have, though, about the letter of education, if that's handled solely, the, the complaint comes in, UPAK investigates, and obviously, there's UPAK, there's committee discussion, UPAK committee discussion with the director. And then there's a decision made that it results in a letter of education. Then that means the board would never hear about these, any of these complaints that come in and result in a letter of education. Is that what we're anticipating?
Director Asmuson?
Ben is saying no.
No, the board would still be able to, would still have to, it would still go on the consent calendar as a no-action case. And, and the way this is written right now, we put a notation that UPAK would likely issue a letter of education along with it. But it would, it would be on the consent calendar for no action.
Okay, so the case, but we wouldn't have a discussion of all the facts like we do now?
It would be on the consent calendar, similar to.
So we wouldn't have an investigative report, is what I'm.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know either.
Okay, for a letter of education. Okay, so it's very similar. But the one that's different is probably the warning. And I, I'm still not, I, it's still a little, I'm a little foggy still about the difference between the letter of education as it is now and how it would be, but that, I don't need to completely understand that right now. So thanks. That's all I had on that, on this particular rule, too. Thanks, Chair.
I, I was going to follow up, and Member Bogus, maybe you can help me understand. So with the letter of warning, is that, and maybe this kind of goes along with lines, if we go up to lines two seventy-four.
I'm sorry, Member Ballinger, I'm just getting it up on my screen here.
Yeah, you're good. Okay, here we go. So this, yeah, so this final action means action by the board that concludes an investigation. So I think this is what we're talking about with a letter of warning. So I guess maybe you can help me understand the intent. Is the intent on the letter of warning for that to be more of a consent agenda, or for the board to review all of those?
So the, there's nothing, can I just, can I comment and then answer your question?
Yeah, please.
So there's nothing in this draft that would put a letter of warning into Cactus that I am aware of? That it doesn't go in there?
We've recorded letters of warning in Cactus already.
Oh, okay.
I misspoke. Sorry about that.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, Ben. Thank you. So the, the, the purpose would be that they, they are available under grandma. And so that would be, that was, that's the only change, really, that, that this would make is that a letter of warning would be available under grandma. If that's not what the board wants, if they don't want that transparency with the public, then they can obviously change that language and, and keep that information from the public. I think it just is a policy decision that the board has to make. I've, I've discussed this with Director Asmuson. And we both have very compelling arguments. And I think that the reality is, the board will have to make a decision as to whether or not they want to continue to keep that information from the public, or whether or not they want to go ahead and make that available under grandma. Currently, we are not in compliance with the grammar code. It does say that letters of warning should be public, but it, it really is just a, a policy decision of the board to, to make that determination.
Yeah, I would take issue with the fact that it's inconsistent with grammar on its face. That would merit more discussion.
Okay.
That's all the questions I have, though.
That's all the questions you have?
Uh huh, thank you.
Okay. And let's see, Member Longacre, did you have any questions or comments about two-ten while we're on it?
No, but I'm going to have to hop off in like ten minutes. I'm so sorry.
Okay, we'll, we'll try, we'll try to finish, we'll try to finish up as soon as we can. Member Lear?
I have a few things on two-ten. And they're, again, they're not, most of them are not questions. So I would just like to state my concerns for the record, and then move to what you want to do next.
Okay, please.
And if, and if it's okay, I may, some of these may be a question or may not. And if the, the primary drafter of these, Member Bogus, is willing to answer them, or Director Asmuson wants to answer them, that's great. But mostly minor, just comments.
So one thing I would just ask then, is, Member Lear, is that if one is a question, if you'll just state it in a question so we can make sure that we direct that, the ones that you want responses to and the ones you don't?
I'll be clear about that. Thank you. I'm still concerned that there is a blending of performance and conduct. And similarly, employment and licensing. Let me speak to the performance.
Do you have the line number?
I, I don't have it on, I have it in draft three. I don't have them on draft, I don't have them on draft four.
They may have been removed.
Not all of them, Christina, that I, as I quickly read through, some of them, in fact, I would even dare say most of them. But if you have one of them left that goes to performance, that still makes it a, a, a different issue for, for UPAK's investigation. Because that's never been the, the purpose before. Let me see if I can quickly go back to two-ten, if you're okay about that. And I, and I, as I read it really quickly earlier, because you did remove some of them.
This, what is?
But let me see.
And maybe I can, I'm going to, maybe I can speak to, so if we go back up to even lines twenty-six and twenty-nine, when it talks about the purpose of the rule, I think this is maybe what Member Lear is talking to, where it talks about establishing standards.
Fit for duty.
Is, are those the pieces that you're talking about, where the, the purpose is including the educator's standards?
Right, that's part of it, yes. That's, that's, that's the summary of it, as it should be in that part of the rule. So yes, that, that's establish standards to ensure the education is fit for duty. And then it goes into behavior. So fit for duty is usually, is, is sort of a term of art. So I'm, I'm kind of bristling at that a little bit, too. But the teacher is non-compliant with laws, that perhaps could be, that could perhaps be a performance issue as opposed to a conduct issue. But I even have a couple of others that I've found. Like on five seventy-three, where it says, "Shall complete professional duties with competence." Shall, and then line five seventy-four, "High standards of performance." Going down in that area through instruction on line six oh three. Although that is really about persuading students, and so I think maybe we just, that could be reworded.
That's current language.
Okay, then that is, it's been clear then that that's not a conduct issue. Shall complete, on line five seventy-three, I said. shall complete up on line five seventy-three, I said that, professional duties with con, with com competence. And maybe I can just ask you, Christina, if that's okay? Um, because we hadn't, I haven't really had time to process all of the changes between draft three and draft four. Are you intending now to remove all of the issues that have to do with a teacher's effectiveness?
So i- in draft five that they sent out last night.
Oh, four, that, oh, five, I'm sorry. You're right.
Five, there are a number of those things that have been struck and looped in, if you will, to five seventy-three and competence is defined.
But in this rule, are you intending to get rid of all of the competence related issues?
Is that my intention?
Well, did you, in striking those that you did, were you trying to get all of them or were you trying to leave? Did you still want, um, a teacher's lack of competence, uh, or effectiveness to be a UPAC issue?
Uh, yeah, I do. I think, you know, we have to be competent to earn a license. My question is why don't we have to be competent to keep a license?
Okay.
And so, um, again, it's a policy decision. The board will have to debate it. But, um, I, I think it's, it's been defined and the some of the, the language, like if we could look, I know Member Ballinger brought it up at twenty-six. Most of that language comes from our legislative code. So those words, uh, in fact, the word incompetent comes directly from the UPAC code. And so the law tells us to address that.
And I'd have to look at that, um, myself and see it in context. My concern about this, the bigger issue of the UPAC taking on competence is that about 10 or 12 years ago, the legislature directed the state board to come up with an evaluation process for teachers. I don't know if you were, you probably, I don't know if you were teaching then Christina, I don't know if Amanda remembers, but it was a very intensive process where administrators and those who'd be evaluating teachers had two to three days of an intensive training to evaluate teachers. It wasn't, this wasn't conduct related. It was purely, are you an effective teacher? And I was able, I was actually retired from the USBE at the time, but able to, to attend those trainings which were very intense, but also very interesting and very informative. Going on to say that those who would be now evaluating teachers would be very, um, specifically and highly trained. And it concerns me that we would take eleven UPAC members, um, only not all of whom are even teachers and so, and, and probably none or a few of those, a couple of those are administrators, but maybe not administrators back in that day. And, and all of a sudden expect them to be able to evaluate a teacher's effectiveness. I think we've been clear in past rules about conduct, but evaluating a teacher for effectiveness is a whole different ballgame. And so I'm very concerned that those, that that would be a blended situation and that there's any language left in this rule that has to do with teacher effectiveness as opposed to the, the conduct issues. So that's just my general concern. I also think that very closely related is are the employment issues because a teacher can clearly be, uh, non-renewed or terminated for, uh, ineffective teaching, which is purely an employment issue, but not necessarily a licensing issue, which is the board's responsibility. So I'll just leave that big concern saying that in my swift review of the last draft you sent, Christina, I still saw some of those uh, performance issues. Uh, they didn't seem to all be, uh, gone. And you just suggested that your intent is to leave some of those, all of those, and have UPAC consider whether a teacher is effective or not, not just, um, uh, accused of misconduct.
So I, I would argue that I, nobody in, there's no place in this rule where the word effective is used in that context, to my knowledge. Um, we're not talking about how effective or how not effective a teacher is. We're talking about incompetent behavior, which is different from teacher effectiveness. So I would disagree with you a little bit there, um, Member Lear. Um, but I appreciate your feedback.
And I, I don't see those as different, maybe different in terms of degree, but not difference in terms of kind. So a few other things, and I'll mention these just quickly because I know Erin has to check out. Um, I'm looking on line twenty-six. When this is draft three, all my references are from draft three because that's what I had, um, when I was looking at these yesterday. Um,
So you might be speaking about language that has been struck. What, let me pull up draft three real fast because we're, we're so far beyond draft three.
Well, not that far beyond. I didn't feel like, because I looked at this quickly.
Well, it says draft five now, so.
Right, but there aren't a lot of changes that I am talking about. Let me go all the way to the beginning and I can look at it and compare my drafts perhaps as I talk.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause this just for a moment, Member Lear and Member Bogus, just for sake of time, because I know we're getting closer to the end of this time. And I want to make sure you have the chance to address all of the things, but, um, uh, just curious to know from, from board members on the committee, because I know that, um, Member Longacre is gonna have to to move forward. And maybe I can clarify. So what we voted the last time was that we would, um, we had a motion in our last committee meeting to share a discussion and to recommend establishment of a working group to review um, these rules. And I know that Member Bogus has worked a lot on updating these and, and taken a lot of the feedback into consideration. I do know that there's still several concerns, maybe, and maybe even a major one, um, combining the the standards with this rule. And just wondering, because I want to make sure we're also making the best use of our time, if there was it, I guess my question would be if, if there's, maybe this is to, to, um, a question to, uh, Deputy Superintendent Newey, if there's no motion during this committee meeting, is it presumed that since we've moved these forward to leadership to, to, to do a working group, or would there have to be a new motion to include this new version?
It's a good question. Uh, A G O Beal. Do you have thoughts on this one?
Sorry, my camera's loading slowly today. There we go. Okay, um. Can you repeat the question?
Yes. So my question is, so in our last committee meeting, we had made a, a motion that passed to share the committee discussion with board leadership and recommend the establishment of a working group for the UPAC rules. So I do know that Member Bogus has worked really hard to, um, take some of the feedback from um, our last committee meeting to update it into a new version. And we were having this committee meeting to, um, make sure that we were able to talk about the ones two eleven, uh, two fifteen, two seventeen that we didn't get to. So my question is, do we have to make a new motion to include the new version or would that already be, uh, assumed, given that we had made a motion to move this whole UPAC rules forward to a, a working group?
I think the way that it's worded where it was already a motion to move all of the UPAC rules would be inclusive of that. Um, I don't think it's necessary to do another motion, but if you want to, just for clarity's sake, I, I also don't see an issue with that. But I think the, the way it was worded previously with the UPAC rules would be inclusive of these rules as well.
Okay, that's helpful. And so I guess that, that would be my question because I know we're coming up on our time. Member Lear, did you want to continue on to two ten? Or does that change where you want to, to go in the direction of what we've, um, voted on previously?
Uh, it doesn't. I, um, I could do one of two things. I could go along and just say, I still support a working group. Uh, and my personal preference would be, and this is for later discussion, I think, but I would like to start from the rules we have currently and not necessarily from the drafts that Christina has worked so hard on. Um, but I'd like to start with the status quo if we move to a working group. And I'm fine with that. I can also say that I will take three minutes and quickly give you my, uh, give her my concerns. And we can then move. So I'll do whichever one you, you think we have time for.
Yeah, I, I do. I would, I would be happy to let you share your additional concerns since we're on this discussion. I just wanted to make sure we kind of had a clear, I was trying to make sure we could make a decision before Member, um, Longacre had to pop off. She had to, but now we have, looks like we have Chair Carrie with us as well. So go ahead, Member Lear.
Okay, I'm looking at a lines and again, I'm, now I'm trying to, uh, compare my lines with both, uh, drafts, draft five and the draft three. And I still see in draft five, um, the lines, um, the language from lines twenty-five and twenty-six, which say, recognize that, uh, no, 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 sorry. Um, uh, uh, line twenty-seven, it is on, and I won't be able to always find the, the draft, um, lines consistently, but incompetent, non-compliant are both, um, and non-compliant with rules and policies. And policies, I'm not sure if that means all policies, local LEA policies, uh, USDA policies, um, other policies that are very general. That concerns me that that's a very, very general statement. Also, the next two lines, um, which are lines twenty-eight and twenty-nine, um, and they maybe have been, uh, D, let's see, establish. Yeah, well, yes, they still are the same in both drafts. Establish presumptive penalties for violating educator standards. Okay, that I agree with. And other legal requirements. Presumptive penalties for speeding tickets, parking tickets, those are legal requirements. So I find legal requirements, um, unnecessary and again, much too broad. Um, let me just quickly flip through these. Um, um, I appreciate that, uh, there's still the language of legal space on line one eighteen. Um, I'm concerned about the boundary violation definition. Let me just say that because there could be, um, teacher-student interaction in a neighborhood or in a church setting that perhaps might be a one-on-one setting. So I think we need to be clear about that. Um.
So we are clear on that if you look at one twenty-five?
And again, I, I, I don't need a response every time. These are the things I came up with. And if we pursue these, then we'll both have an opportunity to have a back and forth discussion. So I'm, uh, a little, I, I was in, I was pleased that the definite, that the line of implied profanity was, was struck because I was not wanting to give up my, um, language of gosh almighty or some other favorite phrases from my father. Um, uh, let me see, going quickly. Uh, I'm concerned about the line one ninety-four from draft three that talked about consensual sexual activity means sexually explicit conduct involving an individual. Um, and it involving, and then it's the, there's a, that grammatical problem too. I think it's probably trying to say involving individual consenting, individuals or consenting adults. And I think off, off school property, it's none of our business. On school property is what we would want to, um, be concerned about.
Existing language, Member Lear, it passed the board last week.
And then I think we need to maybe think about that. That's new and it's underlined in my, it's underlined in my draft three. So I'm not sure of that. Um, if it's existing language or not. Um, let's see, going through this additionally. Um, um, again, it's underlined in my draft, lines forty-five, four fifty-seven and four fifty-eight. Um, some issues about transportation. Lines four sixty-five in draft three. Disrespectful is a, is a very broad and in the eye of the beholder term.
Would you please repeat your line number?
Line four sixty-five in draft three.
Oh, we're working from draft five on the screen.
I know, and I told you I, I didn't have time to process draft five, so I'm going from
We'll see if we can match up the lines.
Yeah, if that ma- makes sense to you. And it's more just to, um, uh, to point out that I still have a number of problems that are, where the language is broad and overbroad, I would suggest. I'm looking again, line five ninety-six, where it's talking about what an educator may not do. Access information that may, this is on draft three again, apologies, didn't have time to read draft five. Um, five ninety-six, access information that may be detrimental to students. Seems like that's going to be a violation. It has to be an intentional access, not just accidental access or coincidental access. Um,
That's covered, yeah.
Um, uh, and line six oh seven. Um, also may not leave students unattended during class or school-related activity for which in it, sometimes that, uh, there needs to be a variation if there's a emergency and also the age of the students, I think would, um, matter in terms of a teacher's po- capability in doing that. Um, those were the biggest issues I have. Um, I, going one more thing, line six sixty in draft three. Um, and this may have been struck if, uh, some of the conduct language or some of the performance language
Line six sixty was struck.
Okay, I won't go into that then. Um, I think those are my, I had a whole bunch of other concerns, but those were the examples I can give you, understanding that we have two different drafts. So I cannot still support draft five, having found some of those things um, that still conflate, uh, performance with conduct. And then, uh, some of the other concerns I raised that still appear to be in draft five. So thanks for your efforts and thanks for your willingness to present us, the, your changes to us today.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I know, uh, Chair Carrie, did you have any comments or anything you wanted to add to this conversation on two ten?
No, just that I, I have, um, listened and learned from the discussion as well as the, the submitted drafts, but thank you, Vice Chair Ballinger.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I do, I
I was, I wondered if you want another motion that is similar to the motion we made before, or if we are ready to adjourn?
Um, I'm ready for whatever motion that you would like to make, whether that's to adjourn or to have another motion. I mean, it sounds like from what we're talking about, if, if we feel as a committee and as this body here, if the direction we want to go is to have a working group, it sounds like this would be covered, um, with this current, um, updated draft. Um, so.
I move to adjourn.
Okay. Um, move to adjourn, that's not debatable. So we will take a roll call vote. Um, Member, uh, Lear? I'm assuming you're a
Yes.
Okay, Chair Carrie?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and then I am a yes. So we will adjourn and we'll plan on sending this to a working group. So thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thanks.